Time being 6:31, probably Halifax planning board in the session June 18th, 2020. Appointments that we have. We had a 6:30 for Larry Costa, realtor who called and had taken off. We have 6:45 Sharon Travis. We have 7:00 PM hearing for petition 923. We have discussion, comprehensive permit, CBA petition, 915 Amanda Estates or 16722, any other case law. Pastor Lane, Mike Goodman updates. We have bills for the Halifax Kingston Express. Petition 923. We have meeting minutes to approve for May 21st of 2020. We have a correspondence from the planning board from the building inspector, which is old business. We had that last time. Email with attached letter from attorney John Day on behalf of Robert Figarelli and Tom Emilius. That was last email as well. We have a new email from the secretary of the Commonwealth, Robert Hayland, Public Records Division. I've got a public records request for Amanda Monte. We have email from attorney Mayo to attorney. I'll kill this one. And a B of P O with the response for Amanda's. Amanda Monte's public records request. We have an email from the Halifax principal assessor Holly Mary with attached letter. We have a letter from your hand. Dirkos and Morgan, Adam Brodsky. We have a public document request from Ashley Assessa with Charlie Siegling. Charlie Siegling's response. We have a public document request from Lawrence. For Mount Ponset Liquors, notices from Abutting Towns, Bridgewater, East Bridgewater, Hanson, Middleborough, Plumpton, and Pembroke. OCPC agenda, notices and decisions from the zoning board of appeals and conservation commission, of which there are none. Other unscheduled business that may have come after the posting of the agenda. Our next meeting, July 2nd, 2020. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as read?
Gordon, didn't we say that the next meeting was going to be July 16th on the last meeting?
Yes, we did.
So we'll make the change. Edit and change that.
Yep. Okay.
And then I think Joanne also just noted that Sharon Taveras may not be showing up at 6:45 as well. So I think she withdrew from the agenda.
To take her off?
Hold on, I'm looking at the email that they just said.
Is it on our town email?
Yes, they requested to come off tonight. So we can take that off at 6:45.
Okay, then that leaves the public hearing on. So is there a motion to accept the agenda as revised?
I make the motion.
Sir, a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
As a matter of procedure in the future, can we just identify the times as starting at 6:30 and thereafter? Instead of identifying specific time slots to everybody so that we don't have to necessarily rearrange things to hit the exact times that they're identified at?
Oh, as far as the.
Appointment.
We can do it, but like on a public hearing, you can't.
I think you can. I think as long as you post the meetings in general to start at a certain time and then start thereafter. I think you're okay. At least I've seen it in other municipalities done that way.
Usually on the special permits and the hearings because you're posting it to the public to let them know what time it starts.
A lot of times it doesn't start then anyway, right? It starts after that time, no earlier than seven o'clock, right? Because we're not going to break another public hearing.
Yeah. Yeah, you couldn't start it at 6:30 if it was posted for seven.
But couldn't we? I'd be okay with that because realistically our meetings don't go that long that anyone would really be forced to sit through too many things.
Which part would you be okay with, Mark, just posting it as a generic?
Yeah, yeah, it's a generic time that we start at 6:30. We have a list of which, you know, how we'd like to direct them in which order. But have them all set for 6:30, everyone shows up and then we can take them as we're ready.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to that because a lot of the time we're waiting, you know, the last couple of meetings, we were waiting for like a certain time point, so.
I think it'd be more efficient.
Yeah, can we confer with somebody on what the exact regulation is and whether or not we have the flexibility to do that? Because it would be nice.
Okay. I mean, we'll check into it. But it was my understanding that if you posted hearing, that's the date, the time you're supposed to start it.
Yeah, and we just ran into that in a different municipality where they just wanted to make sure that they posted that the meetings start at a certain time. And each one just sequentially followed thereafter. So that everybody knew that worst case scenario, you got to log on when the meeting starts.
Okay.
Is that a question for Charlie or who answers that?
Um, I mean, I think as far as, you know, generally setting up our schedule, if it's not a hearing, I don't think, you know, telling people that we're going to start at 6:30 and we're going to take. You know, but I think it's also about giving people an opportunity to know that it's in this time slot, not to say somebody that's going to start at 6:30, but they end up having to wait until 8:30.
We could list them in order, could we not?
No, I understand, but if, let's say you listed them at 6:30 to start and then they're paying for somebody to be waiting for us for two hours, you know?
But I guess that's no different, right? We're not going to budget two hours for a meeting necessarily, right? So we're not going to say, let's say, we gave 15 minutes for each one of these ones that were on the agenda. If they took an hour, it's the same difference, right? This 6:45 meeting might not start till 7:00, 7:30.
Yeah, I mean, I'll check into it and find out if there's any legality where we have to set it for the hearing. But the others, I agree, the others can be listed to start at and follow through.
Yep.
All right, so the first couple on here, do you want to take a look at the minutes from the last meeting? Because I think the only bill that we had. That came through, I believe Amy already paid that. I think we approved it the last meeting, didn't we?
I went in on Tuesday, the ninth, to pay a bill at the town hall. And it had two items on it to be paid. It was $84. I can look for the picture of it. It said, "Public hearing notice, meeting legal ad." Number 11649, second line, Amanda Estates, ad 5292020 and 652020. Is that what you have? $84.
Yeah, I have a bill date on it for 5182020.
There was no bill date on it for this.
Legal meeting, legal ad, 11649?
Hold on one sec. And the bill date on that was 65 for the one that I saw.
So.
But it was still labeled 900 legal notices, legal ad number 11649, Amanda Estates, ad number 11649. In the amount of $84.
Yeah, and the bill I have is $84. Is Joanne on?
Hold on, she just had to look at. Number seven. I only see all six. Odd. Does anybody see an email number seven? Am I going crazy? She said it's on email number seven, but the last email I see is number six. It says correspondence. I don't see a number seven.
I don't see it numbered seven. The next thing I have is the public document request.
Yeah, I don't have a number seven either.
I'm crazy. Okay.
I have three is bills. Is that what you want? Number three email is bills. I'm going to open that and see. So we have number nine, so number seven bill, number 923 is what I just said, the number 11649 for $84. I signed that off.
Okay, perfect.
The news, this is a different one?
And then there's a number eight. I had, this is the 6520 invoice date that I saw when I paid the bill. So the first, all right, so there's two attachments to the email on 618 at 1106. Labeled number three dash bills and it's the same ones that I signed on Tuesday the ninth.
Okay, so those are paid already.
Okay. Did everybody get a chance to go through the minutes?
Yep, I am good with the minutes.
I'm good also.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from? Yeah, 5212020.
Okay, I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Do we want to do a roll call on these approvals, just to make sure we get it on the record or can we tell from the Zoom meetings?
All right, Carlos?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Amy?
Yep.
Ashley?
Yep.
Gordon, yes. Okay. The September 5th is still a draft that hasn't been changed. Comprehensive permit. The zoning board met last night and continued the hearing to June 29th. I don't have the time that they went to. I don't know if Charlie knows.
July 29th. Joanne said.
To July or June?
She wrote July on our chat, July 29th, 7:00 PM, most likely in the Great Hall.
That seems like a long ways out.
I thought it was June 29th. Is Charlie on? Well, can I get a motion that whatever date that is, if we can get it, that.
Maybe it's on the town website. Would it be already there?
That we schedule.
Charlie said, "I was there last night when ZB voted. It's July 29th."
Okay.
Bye.
Did he say a time?
Seven o'clock is.
Seven o'clock. Okay, could I get a motion for the planning board to post a meeting for that so that we can participate?
I'll make a motion to have a meeting to coincide with the zoning board on July 29th, 2020 for the comprehensive permit, Country Club Estates, 40B project.
At seven o'clock. Okay, I have a motion, is there a second?
I second.
So it was Amy. All in favor? Carlos? Mark?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Ashley?
Aye.
Gordon, yes. Anonymous.
So for clarification, has there been any substantive presentation or discussion at the last zoning board meeting or did they just continue?
They're just continuing because of the COVID. They haven't opened the hearing. Pastor Lane, the update I could give you there is I got the attorney's number from Mike Goodman and passed it over to Larry Mayo. And he did give him a call. And the lawyer said that they're working on getting the lot back into Goodman's name. And they anticipate moving forward right away.
Moving forward with the actual construction of the improvements?
Yeah, as soon as they get it back in his name.
Okay.
Because what the intent is, is to turn it over to a new contractor who's going to do the work. And then he's going to get the lot for the work.
After the work is done?
Right, so he wouldn't start the work because the lot wasn't in Mike Goodman's name to transfer it over to him. There seemed to be some issue going on with taxes not being paid or something. So they had to update that and get the lot back into his name because he didn't have title to transfer it over to the guys who were going to do the work, so. Did everybody see the letter from the secretary of Commonwealth regarding the public records request? And Larry Mayo's letter to the state as well?
Yes, I saw.
So Lawrence Garrity wants the minutes from the May 21st meeting.
Which we just approved.
Yes, so should we make a motion to send them those minutes?
We don't have to make a motion because it's basically a public, um, public document request. So Joanne had talked to him and said that we hadn't approved them yet and he was okay with waiting until we approved them and then she's sending them out to him. Bless it.
Thank you.
Is everybody in receipt of the email from principal assessor Holly Mary?
Yep.
Yep.
The letter from the attorney for Adam Brodsky?
A quick question as it relates to the letter from. From Holly Mary. Are we choosing to not read her, read her email or letter into the minutes?
What's the position of the board?
I don't think that we should necessarily just disregard it. Is there?
No, if it's someone who's trying to get the voice heard and can't attend, I think we would always extend that. If someone wrote a letter to express their feelings, I think we'd always be open to that.
I'm not going to dignify a letter from this town employee full of rife and filled with accusations and begs a question of her motives for doing it. It's a one sided story.
So I guess in that context, I think. The letter's been written and she's requested it to be read into the agenda. I think we can and I think if anybody feels a need to respond to it, I think we can in that context. So what I would ask, I guess if the public feels they need to be fed, they need to be heard, we should at least respect that request, much like our coordination with the selectmen and just coordination and having an open book. Even if there is an agenda and this person was able to attend a public hearing, I would expect that we would be willing to listen to them.
I agree. And we can certainly give time to respond to. So as far as it being like one side of a story, I think if, as we read it in, it gives a chance to address any of the issues.
So. Ashley? Anyone else?
I mean, if you guys want to read it in, we can read it in. But I think if we read it in, then we get to give Amy the opportunity to say her piece too on record.
Certainly.
And I don't think. Sorry, Amy, what did you say?
No, go ahead, sorry.
I just, I'm not comfortable if it was in my situation. A letter being read about me without me being able to share my side or my thoughts on it since it is, they're letters based on people's opinion of what happened, so.
Maybe, does this even have anything to do with anything to do with the planning board? I guess, let me read the letter first. I haven't actually read the whole thing. I guess Gordon, Gordon, do you have a position on this? Have you had a chance to read this yet?
Yeah, I've read it. I'll let you read it.
I guess from my position. I guess the question before we read it in is, Amy, do you feel like you were acting on behalf of the planning board in this?
I had been in the town hall that entire day doing planning board business and that isn't the correct story. So there hasn't been an investigation and it's not, it's not full, it's not correct. And there's a lot missing.
I spoke with attorney Larry Mayo. He said it's up to the board whether or not they would want to read it.
I don't think we really got an answer because like I think that does make a big question, right? Like, were you there representing the planning board, which case we have to address it? Or was this like a personal thing, which I don't think it has to do with us as a board if you were in there doing personal thing?
I was trying to get research on an agenda item and she told me I needed to put in a public records search for the first time in 16 and a half years. But there is a lot missing from that story and it's not, it's not investigated. So it would be very unfair and derogatory and defamatory towards me where I would have a lot to add to that story that's not in there. And I will quite frankly say that it's not true.
Again, I still think that we haven't gotten past, was this a planning board issue or personally?
I stated I was there, sorry, planning board. I was researching agenda. I had been to every office in that town hall that day, that day, doing business.
All right, so usually if we had something, we would discuss it first and then we would follow through. Like if we had a request for information, no one of us individually would do that.
Well, it's different times. So as I was there, I pulled things so that we would have them because the last time it was on our agenda on June 4th, we didn't have the document. And it was coming up again, so I didn't want to push off the townspeople who put it on the agenda.
And I guess procedurally, I guess, do we know what the correct process is for dealing with these kind of disputes? Because I don't know that this rises to the level of, the letter is obviously public record at this point, right, Gordon?
Yes, it's public record if we receive it.
Mark, I don't necessarily have a problem with somebody looking into information, but if there's a grievance with the process. I don't know that a public meeting is the form to necessarily discuss a.
Well, it's just that if it was, if it was in an action of the planning board, then I would defend it because I would say, hey, that was the planning board and we were trying to do this. But if it's a personal thing, then I, I'm not going to back that. You know what I mean? Like, I'm not going to defend that because that's not my place. But if it's the board and she's representing the board, then I think the board has to address that. But it, it kind of sounds like, because I don't know what she was looking for. I don't think anybody on the board does. That kind of makes it seem personal, if you know what I mean? Like, we don't even know what she was looking for, if you know what I'm saying? Generally, if we had something, we'd bring it up, there would be a discussion and we'd ask Joanne to get us information. That's typically how we would handle these things. So it just seems really strange and out of place on top of everything else.
I know that I've gone in several times over the last nine months of being on the planning board and pulled records and looked so that I would be prepared. And I think others have as well.
All right. At this point, it feels like we've talked about it enough. We might as well just read it in and then give you an opportunity to respond. So I.
I would actually.
That'd be my position.
I don't agree because it's only one side and it's not the whole story. So there's no investigation done. It's just one person saying something.
Yeah, but I think we're going to give you ample opportunity to address it, which gives both sides of the story.
Well, maybe we can have an investigation and a meeting with her and talk about it before all of those things in that letter that aren't true are said out loud for people to listen to and have an opinion formed based on one person's side. And that's not fair or ethical practice. And I would even call it very, some of the things that are in that letter are very derogatory and they're not true.
In that case, we could certainly reach out to them. If they're not available for a meeting, then we can consider reading it in if that.
Usually those types of things have investigations because otherwise there would be a lot of slanderous things in there.
I don't know who would, like as far as human resources or something, I'm not sure, like who would investigate that? Like other than you defending it, which is usually how things work. You know what I mean? If somebody accuses you, you get a chance to defend yourself. Like, I don't think we're depriving you of a chance. Yeah, I think so. If anything, we're giving you a greater chance because we're allowing you to defend yourself and everyone can hear it.
And from that standpoint, we can always just read it in for the record and be done with it and not even talk about it if that was an option that we wanted to.
And allow slanderous untrue things to be stated to everybody on this, on this right here. This Zoom meeting right here.
Oh, we could table it and look into it and take it up at the next meeting.
I don't know what that accomplishes necessarily. Is there going to be something that happens between now and then?
Maybe fairness.
What does that mean?
It's unfair to read something that's on, not investigated. It's one person's side. So you're just going to read it out loud? Like, that would be like when I had a complaint against somebody, I had to go through the correct channels of researching it. And this would imply that I don't, that it doesn't have to happen. I mean, this is one side of the story. This is not true. So you'd be slandering my name. It would be derogatory and inflammatory. And that's not okay.
Here's the only difference is the letter's been written. It's public record. It's, it's out there. The only difference is the 20 people here that are on the Zoom meeting. Who just understand it right away. Do we post these letters? Are they available on the town website or anywhere else?
They're available through public document.
As in someone who would have to make a formal request?
Yeah, just request it.
I also think we're depriving it because if this is record and you think it's untrue, wouldn't you want a chance to defend yourself and speak against it? So if we don't, yeah, but that's what I'm saying. If we don't read it, that doesn't give you a chance to aggress it.
It's really an employee problem. But so, so an investigation should be done and a complaint can't be public record without an investigation. No way. You can't just put in one side of a story and be like, oh yeah, here it is and read this out loud and have.
But that's how you do it, right? You get both people in the room, one person states their story and then the other person goes, right?
That's not how my complaint was held against a certain somebody last fall. That is, it is no means, nothing was read out into the public, nothing. And that would not defame her. So think about that. So now there's a different process here today?
Well, I think this already is public record.
No, the same thing with mine then. When I sent a letter in, it was public record, right?
But not if you didn't send it to the planning board.
We didn't read it aloud. I did. I sent it to the channels and then I did send it to you guys. And then I got it's just, it's a double standard. It's a double standard. If she wants to have an investigation, absolutely. But two sides of the story should be looked at and discussed prior to something being read out loud.
I think that it being read aloud, I think that's how we address all things. I don't think that this is special. I think if somebody writes something or gives us correspondence, we read it, whether we read it out louder to ourselves and then we address it. I don't think we're doing anything.
Do you remember the last time that we've had these kind of letters? For instance, when the planning board had a vacancy and different letters were coming in from, I think taxpayers and things like that or concerned taxpayers. I think that it was your thought process not to read them out loud because they were.
Anonymous. Anonymous letters, 100%. I was totally against the anonymous letters. I still am. This is not an anonymous letter. This might be legit. If we don't read it into the record and we don't address it, then we'll never know if it is. So this whole idea that we should only listen to one side of the story doesn't work. We, we need both sides of the story to make a decision. If this is true, then we need a chance to address that. Does anyone disagree that this may be true and this is our chance to find out?
A one sided conversation, a one sided.
No, we're going to give you a chance to, to, to address it. That's what I'm saying. So when we hear her opinion and then your opinion, that's how we'll figure it out.
I think that we should table this for another night because we have a seven o'clock hearing. And we have lawyers and engineers here to talk. So I would vote to table this.
There's a motion to table. Is there a second? We need to break into this because we have a seven o'clock.
That's fine. If we want to table it for later in the meeting, we can have the the state's public hearing.
Okay. The Halifax Planning Board will hold a public hearing on June 18th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. In the Great Hall or by Zoom, Town Hall 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. On the application of Party Trust for multifamily development, Amanda Estates located off Elm Street, Halifax, Mass. To obtain a special permit under the zoning bylaw section 167. Section 167-7F16 Aquifer and well protection as determined by the Halifax zoning board of appeals. Said property is currently owned by Party Trust. Amanda Estates, as shown on assessors map 15 lot 13 lot 6, map 14 lot 9, also designated as map 15 lot 13 A, A1, A2, D8, D7. Book 49506, page 64, area is zoned residential petition 923. Halifax planning board members. Notice advertised that the Plimpton Halifax Express on Friday, May 29th, 2020 and June 5th, 2020. Before, before we get into this, I want to remind everybody that I'm going to recuse myself from this as my son has a lawsuit in this matter. Depending, I guess. So I would offer somebody to make a motion to go into the public hearing.
We'll make a motion to open the public hearing for the application for the special permit for Amanda Estates.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Carlos?
Yes.
Okay. Somebody can share this?
So I'll, as vice chair, I'll, I'll start the hearing here. So we have an application for a special permit within Aquifer Protection District. Allow the applicant, the applicant's attorney to present their case.
Thank you, Mr. Scully. Good evening. My name is Adam Brodsky. I'm an attorney withdrawing Tatcho and Morgan. And I represent the applicant of Party Trust. The trustees of the Party Trust were Amanda Monte and Ed Johnson who are both on Zoom call. And we're working with Joe Webby from Webby Engineering, our project engineer, who is also on the call and I'll ask to speak in a moment. We're here because the zoning board of appeals determined that Party Trust requires a special permit under 16717F16 for its multifamily development. And I just want to note that based upon our research, apparently this has been the only project that we can determine constructed in the Aquifer Protection District has been required to obtain this special permit. The APD, the Aquifer Protection District bylaw was adopted in 1997. We've identified four subdivisions in the Aquifer Protection District, none of which were required to obtain a special permit. The Old Farm Road subdivision in 1995, the Lamp Post Lane subdivision 2002, Autumn Lane subdivision in 2002 and Pasture Lane in 2003. I believe that Mr. Andrews, the chair of the planning board, actually was on the planning board at that time for the Pasture Lane approval since his name appears on the certificate of approval of the definitive plan. Regardless, we're here before you for a permit. The Party Trust proposes a total of 12 units, each with three bedrooms for a total of 36 bedrooms. A Party Trust has permitted two onsite sewage disposal systems and permits were granted for those systems in 2016 in compliance with Title V and the local board of health regulations. And in fact, in reliance on those permits, Party Trust has constructed two of those systems. 16717F16 has a clear numerical performance standard. No system may exceed a maximum of 800 gallons per day per one acre and that one acre is defined as 40,000 square feet in the bylaw. Mr. Webby will explain to you his calculations, which demonstrates that Party Trust unequivocally meets that requirement. It's really as simple as that. Each system that's proposed for the development meets the performance standard and Party Trust is entitled to special permit. I had requested that town land use council attend and had submitted that request both to the town administrator and to the planning board. But it does not appear that town land use council is in attendance. I thought it would be helpful to have council present because as she explained to the zoning board of appeals in connection with its remand decision, this project meets the standard and there should be no problem with getting a special permit from the planning board. So unfortunately, town land use council is not present. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Webby to explain the calculations.
Mr. Webby, you're on mute still. Your, your speaker is on mute. You have to unmute yourself. Or Gordon, do you have control? I know Gordon, you're not chairing this anymore. Do you have control over who's muted and unmuted?
No, Charlie does. Charlie's hosting it.
So Charlie, if you have an opportunity to unmute Joe.
I don't think he is muted. And maybe it's his own computer. Did you join with audio? When you came on the meeting, Joe, was there a thing that said join with audio?
You can do a call in to the phone.
Joe, you're listed as unmuted.
Maybe try the cell phone because you could do the video component and then also call in from your phone. We cannot hear what you are saying.
So if I may make a suggestion, perhaps Mr. Webby can call in on his cell phone. And what I can do is we did provide the calculations in our application. And so I'll, I'll at least give you the conclusions of those calculations. And that's found on the last page of our application. For lot number one, Mr. Webby calculated a design flow of 660 gallons per day. A lot one contains 45,063 square feet, which results in 585 gallons per day per 40,000 square feet. Again, less than the 800 gallons per day performance standard within the bylaw. Lot number two has a design flow of 1,320 gallons per day with an area of 73,391 square feet for calculation of 719 gallons per day per 40,000 square feet, which is again, less than 800 gallons per day. Lot number three is 660 gallons per day design flow, 86,812 square feet, which yields 304 gallons per day per 40,000 square feet. Again, less than the, the 800 gallons per day. Lastly, lot four has a design flow of 1,320 gallons per day, 116,458 square feet. That yields 450 gallons per day for 40,000 square feet. Again, less than 800 gallons per day. Even if you would look at the project in total, the project area is 12.525 acres, which is 545,589 square feet. The total design flow for all of the systems is 3,960 gallons per day. Divided by the 545 square feet yields for the entire property, 290 gallons per 40,000 square feet. And so by any calculation of the, we meet the performance standard for the grant of a special permit within the Aquifer Protection District. I see Mr. Webby is still having problems. And so hopefully he'll be able to join us shortly. And I don't know whether he needs to be allowed into the meeting and whether that's the problem, but. There's, Adam, there's no waiting room or anything like that.
Okay, can we hear me out?
There we go.
Yeah, we got you.
Sorry about that. I, this is my first time here. Okay, so we, yeah, we, we have a we were asked to do some calculations of the, the flow, the total daily flow of septic systems into the each lot. And these are the lots that were modified by both the planning board on the site plan and by special permit by the appeals board. And what we've done is the lots that we had modified, lot. had modified lot one has a total flow going in of 660 gallons a day. And the, the area of the lot is 45,000 063 for a daily flow of 585 gallons per day per the 40,000 square feet. So that's under the 800.
Joe, if we're going to read the lots, Attorney Brodsky already went through them lot by lot.
Oh, okay, good.
He quantified what those numbers are. Is there, I guess, any more background or additional information other than the numerical?
No, I think that's all you're looking for from me. Was that the, the daily flows are under the 800 gallons. And then it would, that would require whatever it requires.
Okay. Is there anything else from the applicant's team?
No, Mr. Scully. I mean, that's as simple as it gets. There's simply the numbers required for a special permit under, under the, that particular section, paragraph six is identified by the zoning board of appeals. Where Bill will answer any questions.
I have no questions at this time. And any other members of the planning board here have any questions for the applicant's team?
Nope. I don't.
I do not. It seems like they meet the requirements.
Is there any members from the audience that we have here on the Zoom meeting that would like to be heard?
I would like to be heard.
Ms. Kramer?
Hi.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. So the provisions of section 15 are not complied with and cannot be complied with. I want to, I want to just note that like in initially, when the party trust was arguing that they did not have to comply with section seven of the bylaw because they filed their application under section 12. That's the same argument that they get to pick the sections that they can comply with and claim that the sections that they cannot comply with don't exist. But what section 15 says is that you cannot have any use other than a single family dwelling, which has a capacity greater than 1,500 gallons per day. And here the capacity is absolutely greater than 1,500 gallons per day. It's not allowed. So whatever, you know, the, the zoning board may have said, and I'm not sure that's exactly what Attorney Questle said. The, the fact remains that you have a provision in your zoning bylaw that this applicant cannot comply with. This is not permitted. In coming to this conclusion, I consulted with both my partners, Mark Babrowski and Paul Habberti, who do nothing but land use law. And they laughed out loud at the thought that you could just say, well, I'm applying under section paragraph 16, so we can just ignore paragraph 50. This use is not allowed. This multifamily use is just not allowed.
Is there anything in regards to the request tonight?
So this is Adam Brodsky. I just want to point out that the zoning board of appeals with the assistance of Town Land Use Council determined that section 15 does not apply, which is why they only required that we apply for a special permit under section 16. And that issue is already addressed by the zoning board of appeals, which has the role of interpreting the zoning bylaws and applying that. So we have complied with the request of the zoning board of appeals to submit under section 16. That's all that's in front of you. And this board doesn't have any jurisdiction to counteract the decision of the zoning board of appeals. You're presented with an application under section 16 or paragraph 16.
Mr. Scully?
Agree that we have to act with the application that's presented to us.
Mr. Scully?
Yes, can you hear me?
May I speak? This is Gordon Andrews, the butter.
Sure. And, and I'll just finish my statement there that I think we have to consider and discuss the proposal that's in front of us today, which is the special permit under section 16. If there's other issues that are at play, I think we, we need to focus at this particular application that's in front of us, which is the special permit. But Mr. Andrews, please go ahead.
The applicant said that they have lots and they meet these requirements under lots. They have no lots. Haven't gone through subdivision control to have separate lots. This is all on one lot. They don't, they don't have separate lots. They don't meet section 15 of which this board has to interpret because this board is a special permitting authority under the Aqua Fair Control Protect Act, not the zoning board. It's up to you guys to decide which sections of the bylaw apply, not to.
But, but I would, I appreciate the comment, Mr. Andrews. I think we need to focus on the proposal that's in front of us today, which is the special permit under section 16. If it's determined that additional provisions of the bylaws apply, I think that would be a subsequent application that would have to be reviewed and considered independently.
If I may ask a question?
Ms. Kramer, go ahead.
So you're saying that a developer gets to pick which sections of the bylaw they're going to, they're going to comply with by applying under that section only. So if they only write a section they can comply with down on their application, then you can just ignore the whole rest of the bylaw, even when they're clearly not in compliance with other sections? So the developer gets to decide.
We, we review the applications that are presented to us based on the merits of that particular application. If there's clear provisions of the zoning bylaw that, that apply, we evaluate those proposals under those provisions. We've already reviewed this application under the previous applications as well as we're currently evaluating this one under this current application. And we are taking advice from, from council. And in this case, I, I don't think we want to piecemeal necessarily and review each, each provision and try and identify additional regulations that that may or may not apply. I think we need to evaluate these applications based on the merits that they apply.
Okay, can I ask another question? A follow up, please? So have you, have you received an opinion from your land use council that they don't have to comply with section 15?
We have not been asked to get a determination as to whether or not section 15 applies, nor during my review of section 15, do I see necessarily a particular aspect of that section that does apply.
Well, this is a multifamily use, right? Not a single family dwelling. And so that indicated that's not committed under paragraph 15.
Is there a particular paragraph that you were referring to?
Yeah, paragraph 15 says, any use other than a single family dwelling having onsite disposal system for domestic waste with a design capacity greater than 1,500 gallons per day is not permitted. So this is a multifamily use, not a single family dwelling, and it has a design capacity greater than 1,500 gallons per day. So it's just not permitted under your zoning bylaw. It was, it was the same argument that the party trust made saying, well, we're going to file for a multifamily development special permit under section 12. So we don't have to comply with section seven. I mean, the court laughed at that. That's ridiculous.
So Mr. Scully, this is Adam Brodsky. I just want to remind the board that it was not the choice of party trust to submit this application. We actually do not believe that we require this special permit. The zoning board of appeals, however, determined that we do need a special permit under section 16. After hearing all of these arguments by Andrews, can I please finish?
Attorney Kramer, please.
Counsel. Again, it was the zoning board's appear, appeals role to make the determination as to what additional permits we required. It made the decision that we require a special permit under section 16 and we applied as such. If, if Mr. Andrews doesn't like the decision of the zoning board of appeals, he can pursue his remedies and take an appeal of that. That's why you have an application under section 16, which is the only issue before this board. And I respectfully disagree. It's not this board's role in the first instance to interpret the regulations, particularly when the ZBA has already taken up the, the matter and made a decision. Your job is as the special permitting authority to take in evidence to determine whether the application meets requirements for the grant of a special permit within the Aqua Protection District. Thank you.
And for clarification, we're not talking about section 15. It's subsection 15, a paragraph 15 in section 16 of the zoning rule. So
Correct.
That, that reads, just for everybody's record, that's on the meeting here. The section, subsection being referenced is any use other than single family dwelling and having onsite disposal system for domestic waste with a design capacity greater than 1,500 gallons per day as required by 2016 or 15.00 as may be amended. Those uses are not allowed. So my, my interpretation, we opened it up to the discussion.
Is there an echo? Yeah. If I may say one thing.
Joe, may, maybe we should mute you because I bet you're at your phone. It's probably like recirculating everything. Is that it? Sorry.
I would like to just refer to the, the board to subsection F, which is the subsection that appears immediately before the use regulation schedule. And that states within an aquifer and well protection district, which this is, the requirements of the underlying districts continue to apply, except that uses are prohibited where indicated by N in the following schedule. And that uses are permitted where indicated by a Y and require a special permit where indicated by an SP. Even where the underlying district requirements are more permissive. So when you look at any use other than a single family dwelling, having onsite disposal with a design capacity greater than 1,500 gallons per day, which this is, it's other than a single family dwelling and it has design capacity greater than 1,500 gallons per day. That is not permitted. So you can't just ignore that. The bylaw tells you that that is applicable. And they're just ignoring it.
Okay, I'd like, could we get a number for any of the individual systems and figure out which system has the greatest capacity? Because
You have to add them all up.
Well, no, because it says a system, right? So if a system cannot be larger than that, if you had multiple systems, I don't see how that I don't see that being the same thing.
So you think that they, they, that they're saying you can have 20, 1,500 gallon per day systems?
I believe that it's still going to be regulated by the square footage and gallons. Isn't that correct? Like we have
It's the use. The use issue.
It's the use tied to the design capacity of the septic system. So, so for, for clarification, when I look at this, it's similar to the amount of flow per acreage criteria, where it's the amount of flow being generated to a single septic system. And each one of these septic systems, would I be correct to say that they are less than 1,500 gallons per day? If I'm reading the previous letter from Attorney Brodsky, although it wasn't mentioned in that criteria, it appears that the maximum flow to each individual septic system is 1,320 gallons per day. Mr. Webby, is that accurate?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
So from, from my perspective, this would appear to meet that requirement. In that all those are less than 1,500 gallons per day. So the, the application for, for clarification is submitted under the entire subsection of section 16 that, that we're looking at. We do need to evaluate each one of these criteria. And I think even, even that particular criteria is satisfied with, with the design that we're presenting.
This was called the Adam Brodsky. This application was submitted under section 16, which I do not believe you've read. You read section 15. And again, we, we're not applying for section 15 because the zoning board of appeals with the assistance of Town Land Use Council determined that that is not applicable to this project. So we're wasting, I, I don't mean to suggest we're wasting time, but we're talking about something that is simply not part of this application. And so this board would have a very difficult time denying an application for a permit under section 16 because you think that we don't meet the requirements of section 15? I respectfully suggest that you should rule upon the application you have in front of you. Again, if Mr. Andrews thinks that the zoning board of appeals was incorrect, he's got his remedies to do that. To relitigate here in front of the planning board is simply not appropriate.
Appreciate the comments and I believe that we just need to review the subsection of the Aquifer Protection in its entirety. And as, as I read it, I believe it complies with the previous comment that was raised. So I think really that the question at heart really is the numerical quantification that we have for subsection 16 and the special permit that we have in front of us and whether or not the project complies with the Aquifer Protection ordinance subsection 16 as, as a whole.
I have the numbers again, so I can do some math. Because I would like to, I, I only got to write down the first lot, 660 a day, 45,063 square feet, 580. Well, I think that's how they presented it.
Yeah, it is. But they're just, to be clear, they've said they're not going to. So they're not really lots. It won't be.
All, all the calculations are contained in the application. If you'd like me to read them again, I'd be happy to do so.
Well, okay.
Mr. For the record, lot, lot one is 585 gallons per day per acre. Lot two is 719 gallons per day per, per acre, which in this case, we're referring to 40,000 square feet as an acre. Which I think is even on the conservative side of the calculation.
Okay.
Lot three is 304 gallons per day per acre. Lot four is 453 gallons per day per acre. And the project, if evaluated as a whole, is 290 gallons per day per acre.
What was the, oh, so that was the 3, 3,960 divided by the total square footage of the lot?
Correct. 545,589 square feet.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Andrews?
Are they including the non-pervious areas that they've paved and will pave for the driveways in that calculation?
Mr. Webby, do you know the answer to that?
Yes, we included the entire lot.
So for, for everybody's reference, that was based on the entire lot. Mr. Tru, do you have any more questions?
No, I just needed the math because I could have gone and looked for it, but it was easier that way. Thank you.
Is there, are there any additional comments from the public here in attendance? Hearing none. Do we have any motion that anybody would like to make?
Make a motion to approve. Hold on, I gotta get the verbiage. Pardon me.
Are we staying open for discussion or?
If there's additional discussion, Ms. Troop, you're you're welcome.
No, 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 I was asking, are we are we staying open for discussion? Or are we closing for void discussion?
Right now, I'd make a motion to approve the petition number 923 for the potty trust Amanda's Estates for the special permit.
I think.
Do we have to close?
We have to close the public hearing first.
All right.
Do you like to make a motion?
Make a motion to close the public hearing in return of the regular scheduled planning board meeting.
We're not returning to the planning board meeting yet, but we're closing. And then ultimately, I think we'll we'll make a vote and then return after that.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So just for a roll call, Amy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Ashley?
Aye.
Carlos, aye. Do we have a motion on the table for for a vote on this?
I make a motion to approve petition number 923 for the potty trust Amanda's Estates for the special permit for the aquifer protection.
Under section?
Under section 16.
Do we have a second? I will second the motion, hearing none others. Do we have a vote? All those in favor?
Mark, aye.
Carlos, aye. Do we have any in opposition?
Aye.
Do we have anybody abstaining from vote? Ashley, do you?
Um. No, I oppose.
I'm sorry, would you mind repeating that?
I oppose.
Okay, we have two in favor, two opposed. I believe it does not carry. Charlie, can you please confirm that that is in fact the case? Charlie confirmed it does need unanimous votes for a special permit, or at least four yes votes, so the motion does not carry.
Thank you, Mrs. Scully. I appreciate your patience this evening.
Thank you very much, Attorney Brodsky and your team. Best of luck. Okay, we have a motion to return to the regularly scheduled meeting.
I'll make a motion to return to the regular scheduled planning board meeting.
We have a second.
I'll second it.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call, Amy?
Aye.
Ashley?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Carlos, yes. Okay, Gordon, welcome back. Let the record show that Gordon Andrews is returning to the meeting as the chairman. Okay. Um, let's see where we were. So the last thing we had was we were on the letter. Correct?
Correct.
I believe so.
Is there any more discussion? I think we have two folks that might be in favor of just reading the letter because it's already part of part of the public record. Three people are one against and two that haven't voiced an opinion.
I voiced my opinion. I said that if we read the letter, I think we just give Amy the right to tell her side of the story.
Okay. So is that a a yea on reading or a no on reading?
Yeah.
I think, yeah, yes, and time for a rebuttal. I agree.
My vote is no, but so we have a three to two? And read the letter. Somebody want to read it? Read the letter. It's a letter from Holly Mary, MAA, Principal Assessor Appraiser, to the planning board. Good morning. As a principal assessor appraiser of the Town of Halifax, I feel it's important to convey the behavior of your planning board member, Ms. Troop, on Tuesday, June 9, 2020. I stated in the attached email, Ms. Troop was researching information for the planning board agenda was unofficial business for your board as a whole. In my opinion, Ms. Troop displayed to me the utmost disrespect as she pushed into my office demanding me to open my file cabinets and gave her all files regarding Zero Pine Street North. Ms. Troop demanded these files numerous times. As I stated, I was busy at that very moment, where in fact, very where we are in fact, close to the public and I was working on the Department of Revenue's secured website and our office has 10 days to fulfill her request. She arguably stated that it is untrue that we do not have 10 days to satisfy a request. There is no bylaw written for this. I must add that this is in fact at Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 60, Section 10. The assessor's files also could contain confidential information not open for public inspection. See MGL, Chapter 59, Subsection 59. We cannot simply hand over files when it is demanded of us. I feel this encounter with Ms. Troop was unfortunate in her attempt to bully me. Our office prides itself in servicing the public and other offices, departments, boards within the town hall. Her behavior as a planning board member reflects poorly on your board as a whole, in my opinion, and others who witnessed this. Ms. Troop also made a personal mention, she stated numerous times that, quote, she pays my salary and you have children, end quote. I would respectfully like to ask what Ms. Troop meant by the latter comment, quote, you have children. Was this for me to insinuate that she knew my personal life? Was I supposed to feel threatened by Ms. Troop that she knew I have children? And I I am requesting a public answer to my questions. For the governor of Massachusetts, Charlie Baker, we have been asked to remain at least six feet apart from others to the greatest extent possible, both inside and outside workplaces. During yesterday's engagement with Ms. Troop, she failed to give me my rightful distance of six feet as I requested from her numerous times. I feel that she disregarded my rights and I was truthfully afraid to be within the inches that she moved in on my unmasked face. I'm requesting as a board, you review Ms. Troop's behavior. This rude, unprofessional, seemingly entitled behavior continued to the point of an employee of the town calling for police assistance. As a town employee, I can factually and honestly state we do not treat taxpayers or other employees, board or commission members in this fashion. The assessor's office is a pleasant atmosphere. We will certainly help with any reasonable requests within our jurisdiction. Ms. Troop could have simply requested via email or written her intents and we would provide the information to the best of our ability. I feel strongly that this needs to be addressed so that this unpleasant and possibly dangerous situation will be avoided in the future. Respectfully, Holly Mary, MAA Principal Assessor.
Good. Now, should I share my letter?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Dear the Town of Halifax, on June 9, 2020, I went to the town hall around 10:15 to 10:30 a.m. I had to go and sign a bill for the planning board. While I was there, I got information on an agenda item from several offices. The last office I went to was the Board of Assessors' office in the foyer. The door was open and I asked Holly for files regarding the agenda. I was standing in the doorway and I had on a mask. She was in her office and did not have her mask on. She stated she was too busy to get the files, showing me a screen that had a one and a half by two and a half box on its under headline. Sixteen years of being in real estate and I have never had an issue obtaining a file for a client. However, that day as a planning board member, I could not obtain a file from the assessor. Holly has children is not a threat. It was stating that the non-alignment of an elected official to obtain records would not be good for the future. I state this to people in talking about our laws being changed all the time. That is freedom of speech and not threatening or dangerous. I asked a second time stating that it was right there and she said, I need to take a walk with you. She started putting on her mask and walked through the doorway where I was standing. Then she told me I got too close to her. Next thing you know, Charlie Seelig was coming down the hallway from his office and Barbara Gainer was coming down from her office. I was cornered in the foyer and bullied out. Charlie Seelig said to call the Secretary of State. I said that I would and I would be back. I called the Secretary of State. They said that the public record law does not have the word employee in it. However, it was their opinion that I am an employee and that would and would need access to files to do my job. They said it would be hard for them to press on it as there is a limited area of law that they can speak on. However, they did believe employees should have access to files. A bit over an hour later or so, I went back and Barbara Gainer opened the door a few inches. Charlie Seelig was behind her to the right and Holly Mary behind to the left. I told Barbara that the Secretary of State's office stated that I'm an employee and should have access to the files. Barbara told me that I did not work for the town. I said, yes, I do. And she said, you do not get paid. And as I was stating, that did not matter. She was shutting the door and as an auto, my hand on the door handle, I held it to finish my statement. It and so to clarify, I was saying that did not matter if I get paid, I am an employee. I was not trying to push my way in. Charlie Seelig said he was calling the police. I also called 911. I was not in the building. However, that is what Charlie had stated to the police that announced they would be going to remove an unwanted Amy Troop from the town hall. Never in my life have I had the police called on me. I have only had a few speeding tickets and that is it. This is abhorrent that I am bullied and treated so poorly. Again, in over 16 years of being a Realtor and in nine months of being on the planning board, I have never been denied access to files until this day, June 9, 2020. The letter that is written is not the whole story and she and should not be considered to be read at a meeting as it's defamatory to my character. I would also, I would ask the board that would do an investigation on the letter before reading it aloud. I will add that I was not poorly treated at the building department or the water department when obtaining files that day for hours. Holly was immediately rude to me. My best, Amy L. Troop, planning board member, Halifax resident.
All right.
Well, now that both both sides have been heard, can we just agree that from now on, we'll do research through the planning board? And that way, this doesn't happen?
I'm confused, Mark. What do you mean? Like, you don't think we should be able to go into the town hall and get files of things that are on our agenda or that we know is going to come on the next agenda?
Not if it's going to end this way. Just from my experience, a couple meetings ago, I find it hard to believe that she wasn't rude because I've had to deal with that personally. So I think in order to stop this from happening, we just don't do it anymore. It's never had to happen like that. Anytime we've needed information, we've got it. We've never had to go that route. I don't know why we have to.
So just to give you, to put it on the record or just let you know something or the board know something, last Tuesday, I sent an email to Joanne asking for items that were going to be on the agenda pertaining to the last agenda. I did not get a response. On Monday, I had to rewrite Joanne, asking if she received my email, to then get a email from Charlie Seelig telling me that I need to do a public records response and that I had to pay for the files as a planning board member, going through our secretary, Joanne. So that way, it doesn't work either. So how do we get our information if our secretary won't give it to us and we're not allowed to go to the town hall and get it?
Is the information that you wanted something that we needed? See, when you guys don't bring these things up to the board, we don't as a board decide that we that we need this or that it's required. When people take it upon themselves, then there's an issue. Certainly.
This bittering bitterness going back and forth between the board members. Mike, you said that she was rude. You've been rude as well. And and I think what needs to happen is this rhetoric needs to be cut back.
Oh, certainly.
This this idea that you have to go to have a board meeting to get information for what's coming up is not right. We should be able to get the information that we need for agenda items coming up. There there are emails. Have you seen the emails that went back and forth this week, Mike?
Yes.
Did you see them during the week?
I just don't think there was anything wrong with after our meeting last week, knowing that we had certain property items that were being pushed to the next week, getting the proper information to be able to answer questions to people who come into our meetings.
The biggest problem, the biggest problem we have right now is the fact that, you know, our secretary is not in the building. Okay? And now, all of a sudden, there's this new claim. I don't know where it's coming from, but we're not employees and we're not allowed to go into the building.
That's all of you. It's going to be back on you.
I haven't, I haven't been notified by anybody, but that's what I've gotten from rumor. So I don't understand this. If if we're not employees, then we don't come under the Ethics Commission. But we do because we are considered employees. And this thing about we have to get permission to come in, the selectmen are elected. They're not on a daily basis being there. The assessors aren't on a daily basis being there. Do they have to get an appointment to get in? It's it seems like it's picking out the planning board. The conservation has their meetings at the town hall, but we're told we have to make an appointment. This whole thing is angled at the planning board and it's getting kind of tiring. And and I would second the the position that we shouldn't have to necessarily ask for each independent piece of information from the planning board if or from the from a public records request or through the planning board venue. I I think it's okay to go to town hall to get a document for something that's submitted that should be part of the public request. I I think we should have the ability to do that. And I guess Gordon, not knowing the background of this, is this related to COVID restrictions of access to the building? Is that the referenced issue? That's what they're using now. But I've been able to go into the building during the week and I didn't have to make an appointment. I've been up to the planning board room, doing research in the planning board room, and I didn't have to make an appointment. So, you know, this whole thing has just come out in the last week. The town hall is going to be open on Monday. I have no idea what their policy is going to be. They haven't forwarded it to us, but I think they need to make it clear. And we need to make it clear back. The planning board is employees of the town hall. We have an office there and that's the end of it. We have a right to be there and this shutting us out and requiring us to do something different than any other board is just not right.
I totally agree. I've never been thrown out of a place. I don't know what kind of attitude that you have to have to get thrown out.
I wasn't. She wasn't thrown out. She was already outside.
Okay, to be a.
Don't go off of.
I wasn't, I was bullied out. Three people came at me and and cornered me to leave. I wasn't causing a problem.
But I, but do you.
All I did was ask for records.
See that from an outsider's point, you have that whole.
Only if you read that letter.
Or the fact that you had three people versus one. Like, I'm not, I'm just saying, this whole democracy thing, it's usually, that's how. Like, I'm not, I'm just saying this whole democracy thing, it's usually, that's how it works, right? When three people say, hey, that one person was out of control.
They weren't even around, Mark. They came down hallways.
But you, you know, I don't know those things. I'm just saying.
But that's because you read one letter and not mine and I just read mine. So if you take into consideration the fact that I'm standing in a doorway, first of all, she says, I came at her. She came through the doorway where I was standing. I did not come at her. That's not true.
Can, can we just focus on the, I guess, the, the larger issue of board access, right? Let's not get into the interpersonal relations.
Come down to this because if someone from the board is threatening towards the people we need the information from, that's an issue. I'm, I'm saying if it was like, we need, that could be an issue. That's why I was thinking if we just use the secretary, then it would take any sort of personal.
I tried that.
I, I, I didn't know that and you know I didn't, but like.
That's why I'm telling you now that I did do that and that's how I've done things. And normally we get a response about it. So I did do that and I got a response from Charlie and I dealt with it on my end. But the point is, is I don't think we should have to, okay, so we had addresses on last week and we're gonna push them to this week. And then this week I should come into the meeting and go, hey, board, do you mind if we go to the assessor's office and pull this for next meeting and keep pulling these people more and more along when it's our job on the planning board, whether you want to call us employees or not? To have this information ready for them and not be like pulling them through meeting by meeting by meeting, like not having the information?
No, I believe in the spread of information.
And that's all I was doing. And I was not threatening. She threatened me and that's the case. So as an elected official, I was asking for files so that I could look through them. And yes, I've, I've asked for assessors' files and they've handed me the files for the last sixteen and a half, sixteen years and nine months. So why all of a sudden this one day was it a problem?
Maybe she was having a bad day.
Maybe. Every other office that day handed me files with no problems whatsoever.
I just don't understand where now, all of a sudden, everything is. I understand technically it is a public records request when you go in and ask for something. But when you ask to look at a file, why that has to be a public records request? Has to be emailed to them and then they have to tell you how much it's gonna cost you. These are public records that should be available when you go in.
I also will note that I did put in a public records request to Holly by email after this. And I was also sent a bill for $147 and change from Charlie Seelig.
So that if you need that information for the planning board, the planning board should pay for it.
Gordon, this is Barbara Gaynor. May I speak?
Sure.
Hi. Um, last week, when this whole thing happened, I saw Amy in the hallway just past my office. And I said, gee, Amy, what's up? Um, you know, we're still closed. And she wanted to let me know that phase two, phase two, phase two. And I said, this is true, but the Board of Selectmen have not voted to open town halls. So we are closed to the public. So we're not, what can we help you with? And she said, you are not closed. It's phase two, phase two. At which point she went up to Holly's office door, not the main office door, but Holly's individual office door and attempted to go into the door, in the doorway. At which point I continued walking down to Charlie and said, Charlie, Amy is with Holly. He said, Amy and Holly and I have a discussion. I said, it's gone beyond a discussion point, in my opinion. So Charlie and I came back up towards the hallway, the front.
Funny because you were coming from the opposite way.
Excuse me, Amy, I let you.
Please let her finish.
Let's speak. So I was coming up from the selectmen's wing with Charlie. Holly and Amy were in the front foyer. And Amy then cited her case to Charlie and she said, call the Secretary of State. He said, I'm not calling the Secretary of State. It's a public record request. Please put one in. And she was upset about it, called it, call, 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 call. So she left. She left the building at that point. And then did come back. She rang the doorbell. This was quite a while later. She rang the doorbell. I answered the door and I said, Amy, what's up? And she said, I'm entitled to those records. I said, it's a public records request. You can just not come in and get records because some of them have sensitive matter which has to be redacted. So you cannot demand and ask for something like that. It has to be, and we can, we have up to 10 days to do that. I said, just simply ask for that. She had come in to the public, into the building to supposedly sign off on something and then visited the building department and was unpleasant there, as well as the Board of Health and was unpleasant.
Was not.
Is what I was told. I did not hear that firsthand. I only heard the other part firsthand because I was party to it. So we, I, she kept asking me at the doorway when I opened it to call the Secretary of State. I'm not calling anybody. I know what the public records request is. Just please submit one and it'll be taken care of. You'll have it in a couple of days. And she attempted to push the door open. I then closed it. And during that whole thing, another employee called the police and they came. And she was out in the parking lot speaking with them. The chief came in and spoke with us, asked what we, not just me and Holly, but the other ladies who were there are witnessed in what had happened. She, I do feel, Amy, that you were very demanding and expected to have it. And you said, I am here as a member of the planning board because we need this for our meeting. And that's what we said. And after that, you sent in a public record request and the assessor's office worked on it in excess of seven or eight hours just to get the information that you asked for.
I, we're not gonna go any further with this. We're not gonna go into discussion on this. We're back to the planning board meeting.
And for what reason are we just ending it up? That seems kind of strange, right?
Well, well, what are we gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna try this thing right now?
I agree we move on. There's nothing else.
Isn't the place for it.
What, what is the procedure when situations like this happen to do some kind of investigation or? I don't know. What?
We've never had any of this happen. No, this is all new.
Any other town employee would be afforded privacy and a chance to rebut things and write to it. So this is really not the place to do this.
Which is what I was trying to state from the beginning.
Because now we're getting hearsay evidence. It's, it's, we're not running a hearing here.
Yeah, I mean, we're not gonna take, we're not looking to do discipline. We're just trying to move forward, right? And make sure that this doesn't happen again. That's my only objective here. Make sure this doesn't happen again. I want to make sure that happens. But I'm cool with moving on.
All right, the next thing we had was a public document request.
Gordon, if I could, this is Barbara again. Mine was not hearsay. Mine was what I witnessed and what I was put through. And she brought me into this whole situation.
Well, well, you did say hearsay of what happened upstairs, so I mean.
Okay, then I will take that back, but I will not.
I understand. I understand.
She brought me into this with her letter. So that's why I decided that I also was afforded a chance to rebut what happened because she asked to do the same.
Yeah, okay, but we're, we're not gonna run this all night.
No, that's fine. That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. The next thing is we got a public document request from Ashley DeSessa with Charlie Seiglin's receipt. Charlie?
Seelig.
Seelig's response. Does everybody have that?
I'm looking at it.
Kind of find it.
This is in reference to the comments earlier made, all tips of the public records, right?
Yes, that I sent our secretary an email asking for items that were on our past agenda and we're supposed to be on this agenda or moved to this agenda.
Oh, I do have it.
I'm not sure Terry is necessarily the right person looking at the letter to, to contact at this point.
That who?
I, I see the response says that we should contact Theresa Renaud to rate a date and a time to review them.
Well, Joanne is not in the building, so that's.
Okay. So not acting as the planning secretary, but just in her capacity as a town employee.
Well, I, I think it's the go-between for printing stuff or doing whatever needs to be done for the planning board as well. We good with that? We still, still referencing that?
Mark, do you think I went about that email the wrong way?
All right, so I was reading what Charlie wrote about your request. I don't, let me make sure I read the. I don't know. I mean, it seems normal. The only thing is, is like, when do we ever pull assessors' records for projects?
I do them all the time.
Yeah, but what information is helpful for us that's on there?
Um, how lots are listed as buildable, not buildable, how other things have been done, all, all kinds of things. There's information in every file that pertain to.
Public street, private street.
All of that. It's just part of Polly's what she do for a living that I, I'm very thorough like that.
Yeah, I see no problem with the request. Like I said, usually the only thing is, is that we usually discuss like what information we need beforehand, but other than that, that's. No, I'm just saying we are, we are, anytime that we've ever, you know, like hadn't, that there was information that we didn't have that wasn't in our files, like we've always discussed it. But I think that this is like legit. That's what I would like to see happen. If somebody needs information, they should be able to.
How long have you been on the planning board and Carlos?
Me? Ten years, something like that.
And when you want records, you send an email to the secretary, correct? Like this?
No, it usually comes up in a meeting when you, it's usually the information that we need is ours. Usually it's not from other departments. That's the, that's one of the things. So like usually if we need planning information, it's in our records and it's a matter of like finding them in our filing cabinets. Like, I can tell you in all, all that time, Gordon, you can't tell me that we're constantly requesting assessors' information. Like, that is not how it's gone down.
When, when there's no records of the road, then that's what we do. We've done it in the past.
Not since I've been, not in the 10 years that I've been here, is kind of what I'm saying. So like.
There's a lot of information that comes in the folder that I asked for during the week. And that's how it gets there.
Yeah, but you got to agree with me that this isn't a common thing.
But I, I think it's a little disingenuous, the amount of bill itself, because that's ultimately what's happening here. Is that if they're charging us for copies and we're just gonna charge it back and it's kind of going round and around, it seems counterproductive to do that.
Well, that's where I was gonna go to next. In the 10 years or however many years you guys have served on these boards, how many times have you been asked to pay out of pocket to obtain records for an agenda?
Yeah, but none of us have ever personally done it. So like, I don't know if that was an issue like with yours. I'm not sure because you're still going through the secretary. But as far as like Amy's bill, like if that really took somebody seven or eight hours to get that information, then like, I, I don't, I, I don't know that we've ever requested that much work from the town. I don't think we've ever requested anything from the town that required that much legwork.
All I wanted to do was look at the files and take pictures. I don't mean to have anybody do it for me. I just want to read what's in there. Some of the files I would have just glanced over and took notes, not buildable, buildable, not buildable, buildable. That's it.
Yeah, but you see what I'm saying? Like requesting seven or eight hours worth. Requesting seven or eight hours worth of work is weird. Like, that's not what you did, but that's what ended up happening.
I don't know how it would be six or seven or eight hours worth of work if I just looked at the files and read through them. It doesn't take that long.
I don't know, but again, my issue here is I don't want to see that happen again. I don't want to see this $140 bill. I don't want to see the eight hours of, of work. I think we should find a way to make sure that we get that information without these bills and without, you know, any further delay.
So can we try to do something better with our planning board files then and make sure we have access to our own files?
Yeah.
And I think the goal is hopefully with the electronic file submission, we'll have it more readily available. And I think pulling it and viewing it in person, I think, isn't really necessarily that obtrusive, that it creates a problem. If we call them and they pull them and they set them on the table and we can look at them, it seems reasonable to me. Because I don't think we have a large format scanner or any of that information where they would be able to just automatically just turn them into electronic PDFs and send them to us. I think to some extent, until we have a baseline with the electronic file submission, we're, we're gonna be forced to go into town and look at some of these files. And that seems perfectly reasonable. And it seems like there's a different standard for assessors' files where there's work that they need to do to redact information prior to viewing them. So it seems like there's a different standard for some reason for assessors' information.
Carlos, this has never happened and I pull assessors' records on a regular basis. Never have.
But yeah, I can't speak to why. Be different because I don't know that you were looking for the assessor's cards, right? You were looking for the file, not like the public information. So I think.
I do it all the time. There, I, I have done it for sixteen and a half, sixteen and a half years.
So again, I don't know if that's like a professional courtesy that's usually extended. But I, I, I would say there's a difference between the public card and the file in town. There, there's clearly a difference though.
I've had the files stood right in front of me, put at the desk for years and years and years.
Again, so is that like a professional courtesy that they're no longer extending? Or is that like what they normally would do? I, I think it would be weird if they gave you access to the information inside, but I don't know.
It's happened. I can show you proof of that for years.
So I guess, I guess the question is if, if this is a requirement that they work on their part that requires it to be done and it's not standard policy. I don't know.
Well, I think, I think one of the things is, you know, if, if we're gonna have to require to ask for the information, when you ask to look at it, doesn't mean you have to have copies of it. So I don't know.
Right. I, I agree that.
They kind of keep going back on this COVID thing. If it's the COVID thing, that's fine. But if it, if it's a COVID thing that's costing more money, then they should put the charge in on COVID and try to collect it from the county, which has got money for COVID. All right, I, I agree with that. And if it's information relevant to a file that we have in front of us, and, and it's public information that we should be looking at, uh, yeah, I don't think we should be charged for that necessarily. If it's ancillary information that maybe isn't relevant to the application in front of us, and, yeah, we need to think about what, what we should be considering as part of that application. Yep. All right, we move on.
Yeah, it's, but like, did we still get the past, the fact that like, when the planning board requests something, we shouldn't get charged a hundred and eighty dollars? Like, that's, I, I don't know that we addressed that particular part, and that's the only part that I'm really concerned with, is how do we get?
I don't think we should. That's my position. Yeah, mine too. But I'm saying, I don't know if this, this is coming about because of the COVID thing, and they don't have anybody in the office to do the work. Um, you know, I, I don't know what that is. But into department, it seems kind of crazy to charge departments the money.
But also, if that's, if that is like the request, and that's what that takes, then like, we should think, we should be really careful about how many times we request that. Like, if we know that every time that we say, hey, we need your records, and that's six hours worth of stuff, we shouldn't just, you know, we should discuss it first. If it's, you know what I mean? I don't know. Does everybody agree with me? If, if it is a six-hour job, then we should discuss it and make sure that it's really important first?
Joanne just stated, I can pull planning board files, but if any of you want files from the other boards or departments, you must go to those boards or departments. Ashley's request were for files from other departments.
Which I thought that we go through our secretary when we're looking for information pertaining to things on our agenda. I didn't realize I had to go to individual boards. So I would have had to message the building department myself and say that I'm what? I'm emailing on behalf of the planning board agenda? Because I thought, Mark, when you and I said before, we go through the secretary.
No, and it would be nice if we could go through the secretary. Is, is there any way that we can have them act on our behalf and make that request? And then if they provide files to any one individual, they provide it to the group as a whole? Can we do that? Seems, it seems sensible to do.
Yeah, makes the most, definitely.
Well, we can just go with our civil rights and be able to go in and look at public records and not have copies if we necessarily don't want to, and put work on the people in there. We can just look at the files and do what we need to do, and gather research notes and pictures of what we need and move on. That's our American civil right. So why are we trying to take away our rights?
I think the next, I think the next item was the public document request from Lawrence, for the Montposit Liquors.
Yeah, that he wants the meeting minutes for, uh, May 21st.
So we took care of that because we signed those tonight. They'll go out. And I think that brings us down to the end. I must have missed something. So our, our next scheduled meeting. So after you guys took the vote, we're going to need to draft the, um, decision. And, and I think to that point, I should have brought it up earlier, that I think our, our affirmative and no votes should have some basis for the reference of those notes. I think otherwise. Like each person put their own. The rationale for the vote. For, for each person. Correct. And, and I should have mentioned it prior to or immediately after the vote, but that was an oversight on my part. That, that what?
That each individual states what their vote was and why.
Yeah. Correct. And I think we got the votes, and I think just because I think we know it's going to likely lead to further discussion, uh, there should be some basis for everybody's individual decisions or votes in this particular case. I don't know if, if we can do that now, now that the hearing is closed. No, you can write your, um, your opinions on that, in the decision. Okay. So you guys will need to draft that, kind of like, each separate thing, and then combine that to the decision letter. So then not having coordinated that with Joanne in the past is, uh, do we typically draft them? Do you typically draft the letter yourself and then send it to Joanne? Or does she send you a template that you then modify and send back to her? Draft one and then send it to her, and then modify it, or, you know, kind of work on that. She may have a template of, um, of the others. I don't know if she has a template of the special permit or not. Yeah, we'll request, uh, a template from her, so we at least have a starting point. And I guess, for the record, is this the right form now to request for people's input on their basis? Or has that ship sailed? But I, I think you guys, um, would do that outside of this. Write your own. Okay, so I'll, I'll take the lead. I'll coordinate that from.
Joanne.
Joanne, and we'll distribute, and we'll send it out to the various parties, and we'll expect a, a brief sentence or two in the specific bylaw reference as to why there was a, a yes or a, a no vote on this particular application.
All right, sounds good.
Joanne, I see you're on the, uh, on the text on the side there. If you can, uh, incorporate everybody's individual emails. She's asking for, uh, just a written statement as to why the votes were in the way they were. Joanne, if you could then draft a memo and send it, I'll give it a once-over and get it back to you.
Okay.
All right. I think that concludes everything. The next meeting we have coming up, um, we've got the bylaws for, um, July 16th.
So is the town meeting still going to be July 11th? Because in that case, we wouldn't have the votes in for July 11th.
It do, doesn't look like it'll be then. It looks like it'll probably be in August.
Okay.
From what I understand, they're not going to get the figures back from the state, what they would need to do to put a budget together until maybe July 15th. So plan, the town meeting would probably be pushed off into August.
Okay.
So that's why we came up with the date that, uh, July 16th should work to be here.
Okay.
Any other questions, uh, items to be discussed? Any other motions?
Make a motion, no adjourn.
And a motion to adjourn second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, guys.
All right, have a good night.
All right.